Welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. Can I have, Chuck, can you lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
We're here tonight because we had a couple of items that we couldn't get done last time because we only had four members we felt would be appropriate to meet with all five of us, so this is going to be a fairly quick meeting. There are only a couple of things on the open meeting agenda and then we will do an executive session. But let's go ahead and start with the consent agenda, minutes from June 5th, 2014, vote to bills and payroll. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for vote. All those in favor of the motion as read.
Aye.
Aye. Interesting citizens. Seeing none. All right, we're going to move to old business. State assessments continue to discuss the recommendation from our leadership team to use PARK as the district state assessment, K through eight, for the 2014-2015 school year. The high school will continue to use MCAS as a result of the current statute regardless of what determination we make relative to PARK for K through eight. So who wants to start this discussion? Actually, let's live together if you did have a point of view as a management team.
Sure. Excuse me, since then, I also sent you another document that gave you a little more history. I think history is important. Common Core standards started to evolve in 1997. It wasn't until, 1996, it wasn't until 2007 that representatives from states began to form together and actually adopt a serious plan. I found this document very helpful when I reviewed it. It really kind of tells you the history of the evolution of Common Core and the reasons for doing it. I still maintain, from my summation and the leadership team's summation, we feel that MCAS has done its job in the past, but it certainly isn't testing to the skill level that we feel it should be in preparing students to be college and career ready. I mean, the whole crux of Common Core was to, first of all, ensure that students across the United States had equal opportunity for success, and they found that the standards were varying in different states. They held Massachusetts in high regards along with a couple of other states in terms of their curricula, or standards more correctly than curricula. But having said that, what we found when we started looking at the core standards and looking at our own curricula within our district is we really needed to look at higher levels of thinking, more intense coverage of material, rather than covering more material, cover less material and go in more depth so that students are building out the foundations and they go from P to 12. It's interesting, the Common Core standards were built in somewhat of a reverse fashion, which makes sense. They started at the grade 12 level and determined the skill sets that were required to be successful at the college level, and then they straddled them downwards to kindergarten. A lot of crick in design per kindergarten and then evolves upward through grade 12. So the logic, in my opinion, is in the right direction. I guess another factor that we considered, MCAS needs to be retooled. It's an exam that has done well during its time, but we're in different times. So even if we don't go with PARK, there will be a retooling of MCAS down the road. And if they do not use items from exam banks that are already tested for validity and reliability, we're going to go through another pilot year because you can't give a standardized exam without establishing validity and reliability levels. That's the whole purpose of piloting. And PARK has successfully been piloted this year. I know it's only one test at one point in time, but I say that tongue in cheek because realistically, how much time do we put into it as a district? We spend many, many, many hours analyzing and looking at roll scores for every student in our district, so we take it seriously. We put in a lot of time, which is a lot of money. So whatever exam we use, we want to make sure it's going to give us the results that we need to move student learning forward in the district. I told you last meeting, I'm not married either, I'm not at this point in time. We just gave you a recommendation based on what we've seen at this point in time. I've read a lot of posts throughout the state, which is interesting, but I tend to follow posts where people are posting that actually have a background in the area. And I do have a background in testing. I do a graduate degree, one in curriculum design and then the other one in educational administration. So I do have some expertise in that area.
All right, thank you. Comments?
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I'm not sure if you'd know that, I couldn't quite, I read in some of the things, if we switch to from MCAS to PARK, districts relative to their annual progress will be held harmless. So right now, we've got a level two designation on a couple of areas. If we stay with MCAS, would we be able, would we be graduating out of that status there or is there any impact?
From my understanding, you're held harmless if your results go down. If your results increase, then they would honor that component. That's my understanding.
So it won't necessarily delay us in, if there's been sufficient improvement relative to our?
You know, it's a great question here, but when I look at the makeup of the account only status within the state, I really question some validity in terms of what they're doing. We mislevel one status by a hair, for lack of a better word. I think there are better ways of measuring it, but I don't make those decisions. So I'm not too hung up on accountability at this point in time. I think they need to do a thorough review of how they determine that. I mean, when it comes to Russell Street School, there was some score that, I don't even know where it came from, from four years ago, that dragged that one group down. So there's some data issues as well, but my understanding, and again, it's not black and white at times when you're dealing with the DESE on this. It evolves in time, as we've all seen. It would be, it wouldn't make sense to hold somebody down if they improve their achievement. What they're trying to do is sell the package. So they're saying, if you don't do as well as you did the year before, we're not going to count it. They're just sweeping the pot.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree with you about it. It's just a single data point. It's a label that is on around towns next, including quite a few districts with that there for individual point problems or issues, and then it labels the whole town as a thing there. I don't think that's the right thing that the state is doing in terms of how they're assessing the.
It was just a way of placating a child that behind before he received federal funding.
And then one other thing, again, reading in the different.
Plenty to read.
Plenty of different things there. People say Common Core is reducing our standards in Massachusetts. Could you give me a, I haven't been able to find a specific instance of what that statement really means, so I was wondering if you could maybe comment on that one.
And I can only go from my own experience. I mean, I have international experience as an educator. You'll notice in the documents, one place where I spent over 20 years of my career was cited as having the best curriculum, one of the best curriculums in the world. I don't see that, to be quite honest with you. I think it's upping the stakes in most cases. And I'm going to be cautious when I say that because when we start talking about PLA, we're really starting to look at teaching students how to write in a very different way. We're not using fiction materials as much. We're going to nonfiction and expecting more of a research base to write. So I don't know if that's upping the standards. I think it's retooling what we're doing so that our students have those skills for when they go to college, they're going to understand how to do a reference paper, and they're going to understand active writing. When it comes to mathematics, what I like about what I see, and again, it's just standards, not the curriculum, but the progression of mathematical concepts and the approach to the Common Core, I think is far better because they're not wide sweeping everything and being repetitive or cycling it as much. They're taking a topic and they're going into it more depth and asking for critical thinking, also applying it to cross interdisciplinary approach. So I see some good things. And I'm not saying we wouldn't have been able to get there by ourselves, but change is tough and people seem to like consistency and are somewhat oppositional to change at first. Massachusetts is a fine state for education, but can it become better? Of course it can. Every state can become better, how they educate their students.
Thank you.
One thing that that brings to mind, in terms of Common Core, we're not voting on Common Core. It's not a decision the school committee makes. That decision was made three, four years ago now, in Malden, not Middleton, by the State Department of Ed or the State Board of Ed. And my understanding is that whether the state goes with PARK or with MCAS, the Massachusetts state standards are now Common Core anyway. So whether we're with MCAS or with PARK, we have the same standards, it's just a different way of testing them. Are we going to go with the 20 years old method of testing or are we going to go with the new way of testing? And I think we all agree, I think I've heard everyone across around this table say, you know, a test is a test. We've all complained about MCAS in the past, part by knowing, I don't think anyone thinks it's a perfect test either. The question becomes, given that both tests are based off of the same standards and we'll be testing the same standards, the same new standards, the Common Core, whether we like them or not, and given that this is sort of the measure that we'll be using for quite some time, which test is better for the efficacy of the students? Regardless of the process it took to get to MCAS 21 years ago or to PARK over the past three or four years, what is the better test for the students, for the teachers and for the admin team to do a state analysis? That's sort of the lines that I take here.
I've got information overload, there's so much information, so much data, trying to take into, to make this determination as to what is best for us. My initial gut is that for us, it's too soon to implement PARK. I think that with, we've got data, we've got results, we've had, been able to adapt to the data and make changes and improvements. We've got kind of an unknown entity. I agree, changes, change is tough, even if it's good change. I think there are a number of states out there that are looking for something that's going to work. They're looking for the silver bullet. I think we're in a position where we certainly have, many of us have complained or argued that MCAS needs to be retooled, there are flaws with it. Honestly, if I had to make a decision right now, I want to hear what everybody has to say, but if I had to make a decision right now, my inclination is to stay with where we're at, wait a year and see what data we have to be able to make a better decision. I don't think I have enough information right now to say that PARK is the way to go for us. I think the information that I've collected and gathered and the studying that I've done leads me to say, let's put the brakes on and see, kind of let somebody else pilot this. And we were early adaptors with MCAS. Massachusetts is a leader in education nationally and to change for the sake of changing, and there's certainly other reasons that I'm not pleased with how it's been implemented, how it's been, you know, you can get so many unfunded mandates and so many prescriptive measures that are thrown at us where we don't have any choice in the matter. We somewhat have a choice in the matter here, so I personally, I'm leaning towards staying pat.
Okay, I'll have a couple of comments and maybe some questions to make along here.
Sure.
Yeah, sort of best laid plans of mice and men, somewhat of a cliché, but we've heard it before. Another one, high achievement comes from high expectations. MCAS is controlled by Massachusetts, PARK is not. It's going to be controlled by the soratorium. There was no revision attempt, that I'm aware of, to even pilot a different MCAS along the lines of what PARK is. So a test that we did control here in our own state, it seems at the state level, we made no attempt to try and work at that test to see if it could indeed be brought up to the times, if we want to use that terminology. October of 2012, there were 22 states in PARK. We're at 15 now. Amongst one of those states is the one that's still listed by PARK, is the state that's going to control fiscal matters, and that's the Florida Department of Education. It is no longer one of the PARK states. Program management is outsourced to a third party. This is complete loss of local control, if sometimes we have had the illusion we have it, but certainly at the state level, we're outsourcing our control of this also. The way the math adds up with the 15 states right now is 34 million, our state comprising population of 34 million can drive the entire fight of over 100 million. So the 34 million can be driving that for 72 million. So I've not even discussed efficacy because frankly, that's your bailiwick. I'm worried about the viability of the program. The efficacy is important and your input there is greatly appreciated, but if we're going to sign up to something, or something that's going to work, this has a downward trajectory across the nation. Louisiana is one of the 15 still in, and right now, the lean down Louisiana is not to be, so that would take us down to 14. And again, now from just roughly a year and a half ago, when we had 22. I'm unaware of any new states signing on, and if I've missed that, I'd probably have to be corrected. I only see states that had been on board deciding to leave this particular ship, and I won't go any further with that analogy. There's my biggest problem, or actually problems. First off, when we talk about how we can reach out and touch DESE, even that's minimal in all candor, let's face it. We've had some thoughts that we've tried to communicate with the commissioner, and he tends to have a different view on his relationship with the school committees than we would like to enjoy with the commissioner. So now we have this organization that's extra to the state, and at that, a third party doing program management. So actually being able to reach out and touch the people who are making the decisions is going to be somewhat problematic. Now that said, there's a governing board, and it is made up of the commissions of the various states, and that there are steering committees, there's technology committees, and a thorough reading of the bylaws, you know, leads us to believe that this will be a very centrally controlled organization, and the ability for a state to actually steer that ship is missing. We control our destiny. I've heard more than once how good Massachusetts is, and certainly I'm on board with that also. We see that if we had ranked as a nation, if we had been ranked as a nation, where we would be in the world, and that is very high. So I don't see why we would sign on to a process with states that, you know, some people speak, some of our colleagues on other school committees and certainly educators in the state also speak somewhat disparagingly in all candor of some of our other state brethren and their educational systems. At the very least, let's put it this way, we feel we're the best in the nation right now in Massachusetts. To go down this road where there are management concerns, fiscal control concerns, and a diminishing return of states as to who was originally signed on, that causes me to think that waiting is best at this point, as I paraphrase Chuck. Being out ahead of the bow wave is not necessarily bad, but in this case, I don't recommend we do that. So just to reiterate, program management's outsourced to a third party. Fiscal matters that are supposed to be controlled by one of the state DOEs is a state that's pulled out of this. It's a further erosion of local control. It puts us further away from decision makers. MCAS, the reason that we're listed is that we should change is the efficacy of PARK and it tests better, and there was no attempt to realign MCAS. There are relationship issues with the governing board and the commission of the state of Massachusetts, the commission of education in the state of Massachusetts. All that leads me to, right now, unless I hear something that convinces me otherwise this evening, I'd be discouraged from saying yes at this point.
I think Chuck and PJ covered most of the issues that I would have brought up if I'd gone before them. The one thing that I would reiterate is that so little time has passed since we administered PARK in Massachusetts that there is really no way for anybody to make a database determination of its efficacy on its own merits as well as relative to MCAS. I think we need more time to be able to do that. I feel like we're being told, in all sincerity, that it's a good test and in some ways it's a better test. Okay, that's fine, but I would like to know before we switch gears, how much better? I'm also concerned with some of the things PJ brought up in terms of the downward trend of PARK and Common Core. I'd like to see where that lands. I'd hate for us to put a significant effort towards this and then find out that we're, you know, turning the ship around again to go in yet another direction and finally waste some effort in that regard. But again, without knowing for sure that there was a significant gain by virtue of having done that, I really don't see yet anything that tells us that it's a significant gain. There may be some gain, but I think it'd be more incremental than significant, and without the data, there's really no way to make that determination. And again, I just don't like the loss of control, the idea, there's a lot of debate going on about privatization of education and testing services and curriculum development, and I think that some caution and some due diligence on all of our parts would be much better than trying to rush headlong into this. So I'm also of the ilk at the moment to kind of just leave it the way it is. It's one test. There are other ways that we can, that we can measure or introduce the positive effects of what PARK is supposedly represents. So I don't feel like we're cheating the kids out of anything in particular, other than using this particular methodology to, you know, to do higher order, test higher order thinking and those types of skill sets. I feel like we can still do that and foster that while we wait to see what the trends are, what direction we're all going to take. Does anybody else have any other comments, responses?
So I'm not going to try to change your opinion there. I just want to make an observation is, is the way DESE has been running, their guidance to the educational programs, what leads you to believe we will have any input into whatever process they do do if they choose not to go with PARK? There's not been a demonstrated track record of desire for input from school committees. I think we're just kidding ourselves that if you think that we're going to be able to influence the future of MCAS.
I agree with you. I think that we're going to end up swallowing whatever they tell us to take, but at this point, we don't have to swallow it. And my greatest concern is that they're going to tell us to swallow this, and then they're going to tell us to swallow something else later. If they were telling us that locked and loaded 10 years, this is the way we're going, don't worry about it, we're not changing direction, I would be, A, if they were really going to do that, we wouldn't be having these votes, they just tell us to do it. Okay? They're not telling us that. They want us to buy in because it's going to make it easier for them to sell it to everybody else that this was the right decision to make. That's my own political interpretation of the tea leaves. I agree with you in the long run, I think that that's what we're going to happen, we're going to swallow it, but I don't see the need to do it right now.
And then the other observation is, and I didn't come quite as prepared as certain people to bring my quotes there, but quite frankly, I think the quotes that Paul listed for PARK are the same ones that I read for people that are above smarter balance, which is the alternate test being developed by 22 other states here. It's basically everybody that bit at the race to the top apple are committed to a Common Core-based test there. And quite frankly, I'm not sure there's, you know, there's any other viable alternatives coming down the road either. Both sets of states invested in that set of apples to fill the cart, so to speak, there on it. So what I haven't heard is what's wrong with the test and the concepts that it's testing. I've heard a lot about the process, not liking the process. I'm not sure, you know, like I said, I read, read about smarter balance. It is to a consortium that has most of its services outsourced, it's run by the consortium of executives from several states. Organizationally, it's so different, you know, it's part of the process. They're trying to do also to build consensus for their test there. So I guess, I see the changes coming at this point. It looks like, in my opinion, in perhaps my opinion alone, Massachusetts is committed to doing PARK. There's no viable alternative on its two-year path that would get it to an alternate testing strategy to meet the requirements for the race to the top commitments they made. And then the only viable alternative would be smarter balance, which would have a test user.
It's adaptive.
And spectrum of questions that would meet that type of thing there. And again, that would be, have been totally developed by an outside organization of which we would have as much influence as the current process. So I'm tending to lean towards adopting PARK at this point.
In our last meeting, you had mentioned you use the word inevitability and that you felt it was inevitable. And if I misconstrue some of the things you've just said now, please correct me, but I feel that again, you feel it's inevitable. And in some instances, what chance do we even have of influencing the Common of Education in our state with an improved MCAS? You may well be right. Concern of some of the history shows that it's difficult for school committees to have any kind of influence at the state level, and that's just a matter of the way it works out here in Massachusetts. That said, for whatever certainty we have there, we can be doubly certain, and perhaps even much more certain, if I may say it that way, than if we're down the PARK road at this point. As I mentioned, is how the management structure is, how it's removed, and in fact, Massachusetts can continue down the road if we join this and we could have the best ideas and try to move it forward, and if the rest of the states in that program decide they don't want to do that, we don't do that, or at least with MCAS. And as I would say, it's been deliberate not to try to change MCAS up to this point. So say that it would take some work to change it to catch up to any set of level of efficacy of our testing, that's a fair comment, but then as school committees across the Commonwealth, we have an opportunity. And there is a reason we're voting on it, and I would make it a bit stronger than my cast, and that is because the commission does realize it is within Massachusetts' general law for us to make this decision and come forward. It's a policy decision. One of our three opportunities to excel as a school committee is one of them, and you know us quite well, being our policy bureau. So that's something we have a handle on, and this evening, we may defer or we may vote, however the chairman of the proceed, but certainly up through this point, we have an opportunity to register what we feel the policy should be in the Commonwealth. And as we see across the Commonwealth up to this point, it's roughly 50/50, and that's with nearly 100 or so districts in, not counting charters. Charters changed those numbers a little bit, but, and I won't say public school districts because we know charter schools are public schools also, but school committees, from votes of school committees, we're roughly 50/50, with nearly 100 school committees having registered their votes up to this point. So frankly, whichever way we lean on this particular issue, we're not out of bounds because people of conscience have had very good discussions over the period of time. But you know, I know you're a great manager in the company, you're a leadership here too. I would not default to inevitability though, Darrell. I would offer that, if we think it's the right thing to do, and again, if that's exterior to your considerations, yeah, I respect that greatly, but not that we don't have an input, we haven't had an input to this point, doesn't mean we stop trying to have that input that I offer.
To me, it's, the change is going to happen, some change is going to happen. That's the inevitable part of it. The form of the specific testing, it could go either way depending on the, you know, how the test unfolds over the next year or two here. I just look at what should we be putting our energy against? And as a school committee, is it spending time trying to help, trying to develop an alternate test strategy, develop, what should we be helping the state do at this point? What's in the best interest of our students? And recognizing that the concepts introduced in PARK or smarter balance or any of the other ones is generally educationally what we've been looking forward to and looking for out of MCAS. Should we be voting our energies to helping us progress down that path and then working towards influencing the evolution of the PARK test? Or put our energies to developing a total alternative to the PARK test?
Well, I would say we could put our energies towards revising MCAS, and we have a fine association to help us do that, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, of which we are a member of our audience. I would say that's the thing. In fact, one of the notes I had written down, if we were to say no this evening, I think we'd be obligated to offer some sort of, advice may be the wrong word, but certainly some of our thoughts on how we help, how we'd want to help as a school committee and pass that up through with MASC, but then also to the commissioner. I don't think just delivering up then also to the commissioner. I don't think just delivering a hope yes or no would be appropriate. We should respond as to a little bit of our rationale, as to why we went one particular way or another, which certainly would be my recommendation in the notification that we made.
Darrell brought this up earlier, but we haven't really talked about it a lot. We've talked a lot about the politics of why to be for or against Park or for or against MCAS. We haven't talked a lot about which we think is a better test and what the criticisms are of Park as a test rather than as a, you know, instance in our political history as Massachusetts as a nation. So that's one thing I want to sort of consider is what is in the best interest of, as I know each of us comes to the table with this in mind, what is in the best interest of the students? And the other thing I would throw out there is, as Darrell said, MCAS does not meet the requirements that the state signs when they entered Race to the Top, in fact, when the state won Race to the Top in 2011 or 2012, which means that within the next two years or so, we'll need a new test. And because there has been no changes to MCAS made thus far, it's very unlikely that it would happen so quickly as to meet those requirements under Race to the Top. And if they did meet those requirements, the changes would have to come so quickly that the pilot would be next year. Would be another, likely to be another, yeah, we would have to do a pilot for a test we don't know what we're going to be doing with. Now, our neighbors to the north and to the south, New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, and Connecticut, all use something called NEAS. It's the, sorry, not NEAS, it's NECAP. Excuse me, my New England's educational acronyms are bounding me.
The NECAPs.
That's why I know it.
That's right. That's right. I should have known. But the NECAP is a test that they've used, and they've used, and they're a consortium. Those, I believe, four states, maybe Maine's included there. So those five states have a consortium and they've developed a test. And they're not, some of those member states have had issues with it and some have not, and some have pulled, are pulling away from that and moving towards Park as an alternative. What I'm trying to suggest is that consortiums have worked in the past. And in fact, when you look at, when we looked at Finland and Sweden a couple of years ago in 2012, at what nations have performed better than ours, and even nations that have performed better than Massachusetts as a state in terms of education, all of them have, is they all have unified curriculum, curricula. They all have a national curriculum. And the unique thing about Common Core and about Park, which I think we all appreciate, is it's not coming from the federal government. It's coming from a consortium of states. And whether that's close enough to home or not, it is closer to home than it would have been had it been strictly from the federal government. So with that in mind, and looking at our neighbors to the north and to the south and New England, and then some of our more successful, some of the more successful nations around the world in terms of what they do in education, I think Park is the right way to go. Is it a perfect test? By no means. Neither is MCAS. And then sort of a question for you, Kelly. DESE had indicated that, you know, they were trying to get everyone to make a decision by June 30th. But so long as the decision is rendered by October 1st, though they did leave it a little bit ambiguously to sort of push people to make those decisions prior to October 1st, were we to stick with MCAS tonight? Because I do think there are some valid concerns around the table about waiting for the results from the field testing and that, that sort of thing. Should we wait the summer, come back in September and look at the results? DESE had indicated that it might not be too late to switch from MCAS to Park, which of course, I think because DESE is pushing Park very quickly, I think they'd say, yeah, come on and join the party. Whether we want to do that in September, you know, I don't know. It depends on the information we get over the next couple of months. But is that, that's been my understanding, talking to, from our last meeting and also talking to a couple of educators around the Commonwealth, has been my understanding that there's that leeway, that flexibility here. So if we're not comfortable to make a decision tonight to go first Park, which I think as a body we are not, is that a potential alternative?
Kelly, before you answer that question, can I just add to it? Can you also, as you answer that, can you answer the second part of the question, which would be, would there be any disadvantage to your admin team having to implement it only knowing later on rather than knowing tonight? Would you feel like you're hamstrung or would it be much difficult?
To answer your question, Alex, like buying a lottery ticket at this point in time. They've said to us that there are no guarantees after June 30th, but logically, we're not supposed to employ logic in this situation. They obviously are supporting Park, so I'd be part pressed to have them turn down a request for Park by the end of September. But I do know that they are an apartment now that is undergoing many changes and do not have two of their senior leaders anymore. They both retired and they're replacing them. And those two senior leaders that they're replacing will be responsible for what we're talking about this evening. So that, I guess, makes it more unpredictable. In terms of retooling, I don't have any concerns about that. I mean, the standards help us design our curriculum. So we're not going to change that. What was helpful about Park is it gave staff the ability to look at questions that were designed for critical thinking, more so than they had before. So it was an auxiliary tool to give them some information that they otherwise didn't have. But I'm really not concerned about that. Our curriculum is solid and a test isn't going to change our curriculum. Standards have changed in pretty much our tests. I really enjoyed this conversation because from my point of view and my own experience or base, looking at change, episodic change, which I've been involved in a lot in my career, the five states that you mentioned had a very smooth transition to a universal test. They all had individually good tests. But they also had a common cultural element. And it wasn't too big of an area. They were all New England. And New England has their own character and personality. So that change went very, very smoothly, surprisingly. I'm not surprised. This change, I've told you before, already three months from now, what our conversation would have been tonight. My job as a superintendent is to expand your thinking and give you good information so that you can make a decision that you're comfortable with. The change is broad, involves a variety of cultural differences. Not all the states are like this, we certainly openly admit. And that in itself ups the ante of not being successful. Sometimes change has to happen in incremental steps. So five states combine and create something called NECAP. And then before you know it, five other states jump on board because they like what they see. Through time, you develop competence in testing strategies. Outsourcing, folks get used to it. It's more cost-effective in most cases. And throughout the world, you're seeing outsourcing of assessments.
MCAS is already outsourced.
It is. And so the days of internalizing it or keeping it within this Department of Education, I don't know if we'll ever see that again. It's just not cost-effective. I understand where you're coming from. It's a tough decision. It's tough for me to, you know, I'm affected a lot on this whole thing. And eventually, we came up with a decision. But it wasn't as if we came and went into the room and had a decision made in two hours. It took much longer than two hours before we had a recommendation. And it's just a test. Test doesn't drive curriculum. So not married to either one of the reasons. But it is interesting to look at this as a change process. Perhaps a paper should be published, maybe coming shortly from the president of the seat.
I'll offer, it's not a discussion to change and not to change. Change for the sake of change is not a good plan by anybody's stretch. Change to affect an improvement is the reason you do it. And you plan the improvement and then you go out and execute it. The outsourcing piece, MCAS may be outsourced. Recall that it's Massachusetts that controls MCAS. It won't be Massachusetts controlling Park. Massachusetts will be a piece of, at this point, 15 other members, and we already discussed perhaps one less before too many more weeks go by. And then that is now outsourced to a third party. That's why I specifically used the term third party. So it's a further extension away from the hand, so to speak, of the state, people of the state of Massachusetts. Race to the Top should not be a reason we decide to or not to do something. We, as a committee, a couple of years ago voted not to, because the scope was unknown, you may recall, and there were promises that we had to make at that point if we were going to get Race to the Top without knowing the scope. Signing up to Race to the Top was a contract. And as I said that evening, and as we discussed it over a couple of different meetings, without knowing the scope of a contract, the sign at the bottom line, no one here at this table, I should think, would sign a contract and not knowing how much it's going to cost to affect that particular contract. You may know, think you know where the services are. They may be somewhat outlined, but they were nebulous at the time and we did not know the cost. That's why we did not go to Race to the Top at that time. I've heard some districts since then who did vote for Race to the Top, wish they had not. I've not heard of any district, and I'm willing to stand to be corrected on this, I've not heard of one district who did not vote for it, which we had. I bet I had a V8 that day. So Race to the Top, for me at least, is not a reason to make a decision, one way or the other. We made a decision as a scoop and I think it was the right decision then. It remains the right decision for us as a district. If you're a large city and you think you're going to get quite a few bucks off from it, you have to make, we can just make the decisions. My recollection of the readings on the decision to join Park or not by June 30th is if a school district decides to go with Park, it's irrevocable. And that you must maintain it. If you decide not to go with Park, go by the 30th of June, you have until 1 October to make that decision. Just a change of mind from MCAS to Park. Do I recall that right? Pretty much. So no, it's, the options are on the table. We can, if we vote Park, we have no option. If we, as Alex suggests, that perhaps we defer for the evening, and frankly, I'm plenty happy to do that, because if over the next couple of months or so, you know, more information comes, and from my viewpoint, it's not a political thing, it's pure management and how a program is managed. I've been involved in program management long enough through my career and knowing that, I'll put it in these terms, mediocre program, well managed, will be successful. Most brilliant program, managed badly, will fail badly. We have an opportunity, I believe at least, to at least hold our decision at this point. And if other folks are so inclined, as Alex suggests, is let's sit on this for the summer. And we'll get back together in September and we rehash it.
I had some comments, but just to follow what Darrell said, relative to us not really having any, what makes us think we're going to have any input now? Through this process, the last time I've had more interaction with fellow school committee members, superintendents of other districts, and educators in other districts, was in the hiring process when we hired a superintendent. We've all gotten a lot in our inbox from other school, other school committee members around the state. I think that this has created a grassroots effort or a network beyond MASC. I mean, we honor all members of MASC. Some of us are more active than others within MASC. But I've communicated with a number of fellow school committee members around the state. I've got four educators in my family that I spoke to about this. I've got relationships with the superintendents of other districts. And I got a lot of input. And Kelly, to answer your thing about the teachers having some input, honestly, any of the teachers I asked really didn't have enough information to really give me any kind of feedback to help me make a decision tonight. My mother included, and she loves to tell me what to do. But I'm inclined to think that if that's an option to defer, I'm okay with doing that as well and revisiting it in September, see if there is any additional data to help us to make a decision. Because again, I think we've all stated where we sit right now. So...
All I would ask is if we did that, is we can only, we have to do it in 10 minutes flat, because we've already talked this thing around twice. No, I'm only kidding. It was a, they've been two very good discussions. It was a good to have Chuck involved in this one.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. That was definitely worth having that fifth member here in case they come to a vote. I have no problem deferring. I don't think there's any penalty to deferring. I don't think there's any inherent benefit to acting. Not significant benefit that really you're going to miss out on by virtue of deferring it. So if that's the...
So I just have one comment and seek people that have a little bit more political experience than I. The, I think we vote tonight, we have a split vote. We wouldn't have a unanimous decision there. Is there a message in terms of our messaging back to DESE versus taking no vote and sort of just waiting? Part of it, there's an opportunity also to let them know more formally that this is almost not quite a divisive issue here, but there's a lot of issues on the table that makes it difficult to come to a solid consensus.
I think that lends towards what PJ was intending, was if we had taken a vote and we had said no, that it might have been incumbent upon us to, you know, make some recommendations or some reasoning about what we thought was a better course of action.
Or even the summary of some of the issues that we're concerned about as a whole.
What I would offer is, is that if Kelly were of a mind, then maybe he could distill the notes and then the discussion that we've had and frame a letter for our approval. And then if we can agree on it, I'll sign it as the chair. We'll push that out in the nearer term, you know, before we were going to take the vote again, some weeks before we were going to take the vote, just to put our two cents worth in. As PJ said earlier, there's no reason, even though, you know, it might not be significant in terms of how much impact it had, it still would work well for us to engage in the exercise.
Yeah. It was one of my suggestions that it seems we're leaning towards deferring at this point, is that we write to DESE, the commissioner, and say, here's where we are as a school committee, you know, a couple, three, four sentences worth of what the discussion was and why we chose to defer at this point, you know, gain more information. You sign it out. Firstly, you know, collective brains of the two of you, so if you don't want to, if you don't want to reconvene a school committee meeting.
No, I definitely don't want to do that for that.
I think between the two of you.
Okay. Yeah, we'll make sure you guys see it.
And then personally, copy MASC.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll definitely copy MASC. All right? That makes sense. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. I don't think we just reached a consensus. I think that's sufficient for the purpose. Okay?
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
When we do, kind of find our way, if we find our way.
Lost in the moment.
I think that you're great at communicating with the parents. Just, a number of parents don't even know what the Park is. And I know that we've educated them, but just to continue. My sister teaches in the town of Westwood. And in the fall, they sent out something letting the parents know, this is what's coming this year, explained what Park was and...
I think we set the same thing up.
Very similar.
We can do a different approach.
Exactly.
And I think some of the comments you made relative to Common Core informing the curriculum, Park, you know, as just a test and in what, ostensible benefits of Park, or maybe not benefits is the wrong word, the differences in why we think it is worthwhile, you know, the critical thinking aspect of those, to make them realize that it's not change for change's sake, that we really think there's a positive impact. Or can see what a positive impact will determine later whether or not we actually realized or not.
I think we need a direction before...
Yes, agreed. No, absolutely. Yeah.
I was thinking of resurrecting the Eye of the Tiger. That would be great to say.
And smiles from Rebecca around.
Good discussion. Thank you. I appreciate all the preparedness that was evident here tonight. I have one item on new business. There is a community group that is evaluating the possibility of putting two to three turf fields, artificial turf fields, in Littleton. They are, and they're on school grounds. The two that they are, in all likelihood, going to put forward are Alumni Field and at least one of our playing fields out here on back where we play soccer and lacrosse. The third one, and I don't think they've really made a determination if they would go forward for that, but it would be at the middle school, that sort of that new side field that we created when we built the new middle school, which is used for strictly for, almost strictly for recreational sports. I don't know if the middle school teams...
Gym.
In gym, in gym. Right, the gym class uses it. They've sent one letter to me as the chair, sort of outlining their process, how they've gotten to where they are, where they want to go, in talking about the sites. There's some very general description about why they think this is a beneficial effort in terms of increased field usage, you know, less wear and tear on grass, which is harder to replace over time, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm going to dive into all of that. We don't really need to have a discussion about that tonight. There's going to be a lot of discussion about it as they move forward with this. It's very much like the track effort. This is a citizens-led group. They're going to approach the Board of Selectmen. They are approaching us in this regard right now. Depending... Depending on how far it goes, obviously, it'll be a permanent municipal building committee issue, Board of Selectmen in terms of how to finance it and those kinds of things. All they are really asking from us is, do we have, would we have any objection and or approval for accepting those types of fields if it were funded by the town? Akin to the way we were, you know, happy to have a new track funded by the town. What they're not asking for is any kind of financial commitment from us in terms of maintenance makeup or initial capital outlay to afford the installation of the fields. The timing is what they're struggling with. They want to get in front of the Board of Selectmen this summer. And the problem is, is we don't really typically meet over the summer. What I suggested to them, what I told them I would come to discuss with what this board is, is if they are going to meet with the Board of Selectmen, that they, they get on the agenda, we can post a joint meeting and get a quorum together and just go forward at that point in terms of, you know, how we feel about that. I personally don't see any objection to evaluating the opportunity to have turf fields put in. The technology now is much different than the old one in terms of the benefit and the cost in the maintenance. That doesn't mean it's free. It's still a fair, fair capital outlay. But I'll leave that to them to put forward. Anybody have any other comments or?
Just the process in terms of identifying the candidate areas, you know, one of them resonates naturally with me, but not for any real data, which is the football field there. The other two, I'm not sure why they would be a school priority for selection, so I would like to see some process where we get a recommendation.
And I'll forward, I just literally got the letter today, so I'll forward it out today. But the one reason that they, they're talking about the field back here is that that field gets beat up worse than any field in town because it's boys and girls soccer and boys lacrosse, which is rough on fields. And the problem is, when we first put those fields in, we didn't have lacrosse. So there was a significant dormant period during the year that allowed that field to regenerate that is no longer available to me. So they are having a lot of trouble keeping that field viable. And the real impact is on the soccer program, the varsity soccer programs here, because they come out of that field and it's basically a dirt patch. There really is not grass anymore. You know, there could be grass on the sidelines and the lower traffic areas, but it's kind of a mess compared to what it used to be prior to acquiring lacrosse. So that, I think, was the biggest reason why they put it there. In some ways, that would, if it were me and I were debating it, I would out-charge it. That's a primary facility. An alumni would almost be secondary because alumni has a little bit less traffic.
I guess from my perspective, it's an arbitrary designation. I don't have the detail there, but I do, we do have the administration.
And the athletic director has already been a part of this process in terms of providing them information. He hasn't really taken a stance on it, but they just wanted traffic information. And he submitted them, gave them an analysis of where the fields get trafficked and all that kind of thing. So there is some of that in the material, so I'll get that to you guys.
I'd just like to see the process now, but more formal recommendation come up through the administration to us for that rather than originating purely from the citizens group.
Okay, okay. We can definitely take care of that. There's, the Acton did this on their high school property. They put in fields bonded by the residents, and it's illuminated, and they are already paying back on the bonds. And it's a revenue generator. They're renting these things out and making money. So there's, there's benefits, I believe, beyond field maintenance and field use. I think we can actually create some other opportunities if this were.
Is there a, just a question out of hearing for four years that we don't have enough field space? Is that, would that be true in our case?
Actually, what, one of the things that they talk about is, is that what it would conceivably do is reduce, conceivably reduce the requirement for new field space because you could create more traffic on the existing field space. So all of a sudden, the need would go down by some degree. Whether it's not by enough of a degree that we don't need any more new fields at all, or we need fewer new fields, and some people have been talking about. That is a big, is going to be a big part of the debate, you know, going forward with the Board of Selectmen. I'm sure Park and Rec, who I haven't had any interaction with on this and haven't heard what their point of view is. Yeah, so.
It's an exciting, exciting opportunity.
What is that a virginity?
I, you know, I don't know. I've only really accepted the letter from them. I, I don't know. I think they just, they want, I think their goal is to get in front of Fall Town Meeting if there is an opportunity to move forward and conceivably, if there's a vote that's required for, for dead exclusion or other issues. I really didn't want to get into it with them in terms of recommendations or anything along those lines, but that is a legitimate question.
Well, to be frank, the folks that are bringing this forward have young kids. They want their kids to benefit from it. They're the ones with the energy and the ones that are, that are being, not penalized, the ones that are facing the challenges.
A missed opportunity, a missed opportunity if it goes another year or two down the road. It's the same kind of issue with the track effort.
Yeah, I think from the conversation so far, you know, certainly we're nowhere near prepared to offer a recommendation beyond some physical issues that you mentioned. You know, turf field, can't get more traffic on it because it can use more often. So if you look at it, field units, to put it in those terms, how many field units do we have today? And if we take those same fields now and then turf them, do we increase the field units available to us? And the answer is yes intuitively, so that's fair enough. You mentioned a funding scheme, which will certainly be very, very important to us as we go forward. I would anticipate based on how we went about the track, interested citizens got together and began going forward, similar to what we seem to be describing here. We finally did get that in front of the Board of Selectmen. Feasibility study took place to see, you know, what made sense where and how to do that. You may recall, in fact, back here was one of the options that we did look at when we were looking at the new track. So I think from our perspective this evening, to say, please, citizens, continue going forward. Get the data, bring it together, and then give us an opportunity before, I would almost say before it goes to the selectmen. And they'll be able to make their own choice on that, but I would think that the way this.
And you brought up a good point. I believe, and we'll get more clarification, I believe that that's what they're hoping for in the fall, is a feasibility. Is not to authorize the building of the fields.
Yeah, yeah, I would expect that.
It's just to start the process, which would require feasibility study.
Because I would say, now I haven't read the letter, who signed it? Some of these people that are involved, we know, be some very same who are involved in the track.
Yeah.
And they understand the process well.
Which is good.
Because we all learn lessons, as you mentioned about that. So there's a lesson we can apply going forward here.
I'm happy with the idea of having a joint meeting with the selectmen and then having either the athletic director or the principal superintendent if not give us a formal recommendation, at least compile some information for us, so that when we do have a joint meeting with the selectmen, we have more of a foundation to work off of when we have that conversation. And I do like the idea that, that I think solves our issue of, do we have enough information to really engage in this issue? While also making sure that the group can move forward in a timely fashion.
Yeah, in an effective manner as well.
Exactly.
I mean, they just don't want to, you know, chase and pine that sky dreams that I'll be able to achieve them, so I think we can help them with that.
I agree.
It's an administration and it's a school committee, so. All right, so I think that's fine. I'll get you guys the information that I have, and we will go ahead and make sure that we formalize what comes out of our administration of, from the AD and stuff. And especially from our point of view rather than from what he was providing to a citizens group, so we can take care of that. The chair, I mean, the superintendent and I will take care of that. All right, thank you. Any other new business? All right, hearing none. We still have no interested citizens. I would like to thank Kirby for coming out on short notice and doing this. Again, it was a quick meeting that we felt like the Park discussion was very germane, and we wanted to have it before, because we're kind of taking a break now as we're going into the summer. It was the last day of school today. PJ, Kirby coming back out on the last day of school. Kelly, I'm sure your day wasn't a little longer than you would hope for in the last day of school. So I appreciate everybody, Kirby, I appreciate that. It's very, it'll be helpful to get this on television. We do need an executive session, so I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn from our open session. And, you're usually going to, and enter into executive session for the purpose of.
With no.
With no intention of reopening. Open session for the purpose of contract group sessions.
Correct. Motion been made?
Second.
Second. This requires a roll call, Daryl. PJ.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I vote aye. Thank you, everybody.